Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today, we have the inimitable Bishop Alexander from Church Without Walls to give our invocation. And Mr. Wright, I believe you're giving the pledge allegiance. Awesome. So if you're willing and able to stand, we'd love to have you join us.
Thank you. Let's go before the Lord. Heavenly Father, we just come before you and thanking you for the opportunity to be living and being in this wonderful place called Citrus County, this courthouse. We thank you so much for these commissioners, God, that you've given us to govern over all the affairs of Citrus County. We ask a special blessing for Ruthie, Lord, that you heal her and touch her body. And we're just grateful for all those that are here and came today. Our Lord bless us with the blessing we stand in need of. Thank you for Citrus County Schools that's beginning to open. We pray for those kids and teachers and staff, Lord, for safe year. Thank you for all the first respondents. Thank you for all those that are gathered, Lord, to lift you up. We say a simple prayer that you taught your disciples, and we all can say this together. Our Father, in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Hallowed is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you.
Chief Wright?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this eighth day of August 2023. In attendance are First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, the agenda, we have some extra and corrections?
Yes, that is correct. First is additional information for B3. There's a correction on G1, and that's just for the cost of this warrant officers. There's also additional information for T2, which is an updated PowerPoint. It's labeled as 2.2A. Also, additional slide for T2, which is labeled as T2B, and also T2C. And that's all the addition.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Madam Chair, motion approved. The agenda with changes?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any board? Pardon?
Are we pulling B3? Mr. Howard?
If it's for your consideration, we're doing, are you doing on consent?
I was going to suggest that we pull it for separate consideration on consent agenda.
Okay.
So any board discussion?
I'm sorry, what are you pulling?
No, we're not pulling anything right now. Any board discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Board, on the consent agenda, my preference would be for someone to make a motion to pull B3 for separate consideration, but otherwise, you can take it as a whole.
Pull B3.
Okay, I need a whole motion to approve the others, though.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of B3 for discussion.
I'll second.
All right. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, we had this on our last agenda, and frankly, not much has changed. And I am just going to go ahead and make a motion to deny this at this time because I believe that, number one, this is still piecemealing. We have no master plan. It's the typical hodgepodge of development. We know that they've came in and said there's going to be a car wash on Lot 2. They've made suggestions on what would be on the rest of it. I have no idea what the total access management plan is. I am definitely not for one to have driveways, independent driveways, coming in and out. And we, at this point, if we approve this, we don't know what that looks like. So my motion is to deny this.
I'll second it for, but I do want to ask the Madam Attorney, does it can, this doesn't kill it forever. They can come back with a proper plan, yes.
What your, what this request is, is just strictly relating to the plat, not the use.
Okay.
So yes, they can come back at another time to rearrange things or to do something different with the plat.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
So, just as the attorney said, I would be willing to move forward with this because we're not making any decisions on land use. It's one large piece of property. We're carving it into two pieces of property right now. We're doing nothing further than that at this time, and I want to move ahead and do it.
Commissioner Kennard?
I would concur. I think this is, we're not, we're not approving all of this. We're simply carving out one section off of a much larger piece. And I think we're reading, last meeting, some, let me back up a minute. Something did change, for sure, because last meeting, the understanding that, that most of us had was that we were dealing with a much larger piece than actually what we were dealing with. They have tried to, the additional information we got, they tried to clarify exactly what's going on here. And at this point, all they're doing is carving that one piece out. So I don't see any reason to not move forward with this. I think Commissioner Bays makes some valid points. We don't, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where you've got all of these driveways going right out on, onto 491, and that will be approved at another time when they bring this, this full plan forward.
My understanding, though, is that if we plat it, we don't necessarily get another shot at approving what goes in there and how it's done. And personally, my opinion is, is that that is where we are focusing the big, the big box and the, the big retail section in the center of the county, and we have one chance to get it right. So I'm not saying, you know, I'm not against what they, some of what they want to put in there. I just want to make sure that it gets done to benefit the county in a long-range plan. So I look forward to seeing this again when they have a little bit more fleshed out. So I need to open it to public comment at some point, yes?
I just want to, I don't think that that's the case. And to Commissioner Bays' point, we can address all of those things, like access, when they come back. I think they just put that in the showing us what a plan could be, not what it will absolutely be. So right now, we are just carving out that one section for what they're approved for. So that's going there no matter what. We're just able, we're, we'll be able to come back to the table for the rest of that piece of property if we approve this today, and that's what we're looking to do. We, we want to have that chance to, to address all those issues and to decide what we want. But it looks like today, we need to approve it so it could just be split into two pieces of property.
You and I have two different understandings of the issue, so not, you're not going to change my mind on that. But would anyone from the public like to address this on this matter? Got your green card already filled out? Good job!
Ready, ready. Who do I give it to?
And Clerk, and you get three minutes, and please state your name for the record, and it should hopefully turn yellow when you've got a minute left.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brandon Hebron. I work with the developer OLS partners. We've been working on this project since August of 2022. We originally purchased the property, and there was a Culvers on the site, so immediately we dove into it to try and figure out, okay, how do we utilize the rest of this property in an efficient manner? We've done a lot of research on it. Title wave was already ready to go. So we've got a building permit conditionally upon the plat, the approval of the plat. That's the last thing we need for the, the building permit. So that's what we're here today, is really asking for the plat, for the title wave to be approved. As you can see from the additional information, there are two access points to the, to the project. One is from West Parkville, one is from 491. That, that access point is actually, is going to be constructed as part of the 491 Improvements Project. So those are the two access points that we have. We have already submitted a plat for the remainder. I think it was in June that we submitted a plat for parcels 3, 5, 6, and 7. 7 being the, the supposed storage facility, which is in the backside of the property. So again, I don't see yellow yet, but I think I've kind of gone as far as I can. You know, I'm obviously here to answer any questions. We, we want to be open and communicate with you guys. So we would appreciate you to reconsider just the plat for PLT 2231 for the title wave, and thank you for your time.
I feel very confident that we'll get this figured out shortly. Maybe not today. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Okay, I'll close, open to the public to follow up. We are certainly open for business in Citrus County. However, we are getting growth coming at us so quickly, we just need to tap the brakes every once in a while to make sure that we do it right. And we want to work with you, at least me personally, I can only speak for myself. I'm just not comfortable with it today. But soon, you can work with staff, and I'm sure we'll get there. Commissioners, would anybody like to say anything further?
I would like to know from our attorney, it looks like, and I'm not quite sure why it's not going to be approved, like what would happen in the future? Like what are the options for the future?
That's kind of, it's, that's kind of broad. If you mean what happens with this plat, at this point, the motion that's on the floor is to deny the plat. So depending on how that vote goes, I don't know whether the plat will be denied or whether the motion will fail and whether there'll maybe be another motion. I'm not quite sure about that. But as far as the plat's concerned, they are simply asking for the parcels to be separated. They're not at all discussing uses because the title wave, that's by right, they get to put that there. The sticking point that they have is its contingent upon the replat. So if you all either deny the plat or don't vote on the plat, then they can't do anything yet. Somebody's going to have to come back and do something different.
I'm actually going to rescind my second because I believe we should table this instead.
Are you looking, are you asking me to, are you just telling me?
No, I'm just...
Saying that?
Yeah, I would, yeah. So I'm going to rescind my second, and Commissioner Bays, would you like to change the motion?
Well, no, I would like to know if, I mean, I'm okay if you want to bring me back a full picture. What I don't want to vote on is I don't like uncertainty. I want to know exactly what we're voting on. I know that this is a plat division, but a plat division, by rights, they already have title wave, which they can move forward with.
I, I don't, I don't agree that they can move forward with it because the lot is, they have to have the plat. As the gentleman said, his building permit is contingent upon them getting the plat revised.
But if we do, if we divide this and you give this two and then three, that leaves three. They can come back and do things that they want to do with three, and we don't really know what that is at this point. They've given, they've made suggestions, but we have no certainty of that. I'm just, you know, what, what is the, if we don't approve this today, which my motion is, and they want to bring this back and bring us an overlay of the entire project, that's still possible, correct?
First of all, if you've rescinded your second, there is no motion on the floor. We have to deal with that procedure.
I would like to make a motion that we table it.
Okay, so, so first, you, you would declare that Commissioner Bays' motion dies for a lack of a second?
Mm-hmm. It dies for lack of a second. I make a motion that we table it. Mr. Bays?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further board discussion?
Did you want me to answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So at this point, the development on the remainder of the lot, because it is just one lot, they're seeking to do two different things. So what the development on the remainder of the lot is not by right. So they have to go forward with their planned development, and that's what is before the PDC, but was pulled at the last, at not, the PDC meeting before last. So the only thing that could potentially be done without further action of the PDC and this board is the title wave car wash, but that can't be done because the lot, it's one parcel right now. It's not two parcels or six, seven parcels. It's only one. So the only thing they could do is put the title wave, but they don't want to do that because that would be wasting the rest of their parcel. So nobody can do anything until it comes back to the PDC and this board if you don't approve the plat.
Okay. Commissioner Kennard?
So if we do approve this plat today, they can move forward putting the car wash there. The, the remainder of the property, the, the stuff that they want to do there, that will have to go back through the PDC and then come to us?
Yes.
Okay. So we will get a bite at that apple to determine whether or not we like what they've decided they're going to do with that remaining piece of property.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Bays?
So is Eric, I mean, what's the downside, so then?
You can bring staff up.
As he's coming forward, if I've said anything wrong, please correct me because I think I did it right.
Hello, Eric Growth Management.
Can you please address this, then? I mean, if, if, again, my concern is, I don't like approving something. If this has been out there since '22, as a good community partner, you have every opportunity to bring it forward and tell us what you're doing. And at the last minute, we receive various things, it's going to be done with the remaining parcel of Lot 3. I feel as an obligation as somebody that's been elected to be a steward of the citizens of Citrus County, that we have property in our community that we should be looking out for the highest and best use and the best development standards possible. And I'm very concerned when you have somebody that owns property that is not from this community, that they bring things in on a hope and a prayer that we're going to approve it, and then it becomes something that we go, oops, we didn't realize that was going to happen. That's my fear and my concern. When you put, when you bring something to me last minute and you say, oh, well, you can have X, Y, and Z on here, but there's nothing definitive about it. If you've had it since '22, why can't, why didn't, why was that not done? And what, what box are we putting ourselves in by approving this today?
If you approve it as is, then you're creating Lots 2 and 3, as shown on the plat. And then Lot 2 will proceed forward with the car wash because they can do that by right. Lot 3, it's unknown at this time because there's a pending case before the PDC for the mini storage. And then how the remainder of Lot 3 would be further divided, can't speak to that. I know that the property owner, the applicant has their ideas. If, if I'm reading what you're saying correctly, and you, and your desire is for properly planned development, then a planned development would be, a pud would be an avenue you could take, where you take the entire property, you determine what the lot sizes are, the setbacks, the access, the signage. All that can be negotiated with the property owner in the planned development. If you wanted to go that route, that would be an option.
I'm, I'm sorry, if, if I can add to, and Eric might have forgot, I actually forgot. They are actually asking for a conditional use on the remainder, for the storage facility. So that won't come back before you. I apologize, I did say that incorrectly. So if it's a conditional use, it goes to the PDC but does not come to you.
Okay. Commissioner Finnegan was next, and then you.
My question was answered.
Okay. Commissioner Bays?
So this speaks to my very point, then, because I do want to have say-so over aesthetics, setbacks, signage. I think that is highly important, especially this boulevard that we're creating through We don't, I just, again, I'm going to say it, it's, it's hodgepodge, and I really want to know access management points. I'd like to know signage. I'd like to know the aesthetics, and I am just, I just do not feel comfortable approving this one piece at a time.
If, if the applicant were to come forward with a planned development, then all those items could be negotiated by the Board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
When they go to the PDC, they'll be required to meet all the county code, correct? As it's currently written, even though it's a conditional use?
Only as to the rear portion. That's all, in the application that's pending, unless it's changed, and I don't know that. But if what went before, that what was going to go before the PDC before was just the storage facility, it wasn't the out parcels on the front.
Okay.
So as long as they comply with the code as to the storage facility, I don't know what they're going to do up in the front, but as long as they comply down, you know, with the storage facility, then yes. It, it could be approved, you know, by the PDC, but you're not going to know what's going on in the front. These other pictures that came in as additional, that's the only question that, you know, Lot 3, 4, 5, and 6. So they, you know, they could make it all one planned development. They could do Lot 7, 6, 5, 4, and 3, and then you would have control over everything. Or they could leave the conditional use on 7.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Bays 100% in terms of not only traffic flow management, access points, signage, aesthetics, 100%.
Landscaping was one, I did not mention that.
Landscaping, yes. Everything that we just went through with, is it Amber Ridge?
Correct.
Where Target's going, yes. So needs to be pretty.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Have they changed the conditional use application? I, I don't know.
It's still proceeding next week, as I'm aware.
Oh, okay.
Karen, make one of my own. I feel extremely passionate and strong about this, and I'm going to lay it out for the people that are watching on TV and the audience. When we develop roads like 491, it costs a lot of money to put the roadways in, to put the utilities in, to have all of this expansion. And, and much of that comes, I mean, we, we have to charge for that for, as our taxpayers. And we have an obligation to them as we move forward in this community to know exactly what that's going to look like. We don't, we've been this community for a long time where we just approve things on the fly, and that's why we see other communities to the south of us that have ended up with what they've got, and we say all the time, we don't want to be them. If we approve this, this is being them. And that's not what I want to be. And the way I look at it, one-third of our property is never going to be developable. We claim that we're an environmentally sensitive community, and we have our lakes and our rivers, which takes another portion of our community that's not developed. And what we do have should be precious, and we should demand the very best. And that's what I'm going to say about it.
Ditto. Any further comments? Motion on the floor is to table B3. And since it's a different motion, I need to open it up to the public again. So any public comment on B3 table? Seeing none, closed public comment. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that's four ayes, yes?
No. Two and aye opposed.
You said aye, and I thought you would say nay. My apologies.
I don't know where Commissioner Finnegan was at.
Okay, so it was, what did you vote? Aye.
Aye, I mean, that's the way it's going.
Okay, so 3-1.
Okay.
All right. Six minutes until our time's certain. Board, anybody want to make a motion on proclamation?
Motion to approve Items C1 and C2.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And any public comment? Board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Join me downstairs.
Will the individuals representing the Nature Coast Community Band 15th Season of Performances please come forward? Whereas music is a vital part of our lives, and music performance and appreciation are important to our social, cultural, historical, and educational development, and whereas Nature Coast Community Band is entering its 15th season of providing free concerts to the citizens of Citrus County and beyond, Nature Coast is an all-volunteer band comprised of retired professionals, retired military members, audition students, active band directors, and well-qualified musicians. And whereas Nature Coast Community Band takes pride in representing Citrus County and its citizens at events, contributing to the quality of life in Citrus County, the NCCB honors its veterans during Veterans Week, Massing of the Colors, and Purple Heart Ceremony, and whereas NCCB has been nominated for Guide to Florida, which will increase the enhanced tourism, real estate, retirement, and family living, NCCB is involved in community outreach projects and civic connections. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby encourage our citizens and visitors to attend the Nature Coast Community Band's free concerts, and understands the impact of the band in cultural life to our county. They do hereby recognize 2023-2024 as Nature Coast Community Band's 15th Season of Performances in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 8th day of August 2023.
Thank you.
You know, we're probably going to have a long gap between making decisions to have brought everybody to play. Do I get one? Thank you.
Thank you.
With those individuals representing Breastfeeding Support Month, please come forward. Whereas infant nutrition is considered a public health issue and critically important during natural and health emergencies, the nutrients exclusive to human milk cannot be manufactured. Breastfeeding promotes overall health and health, growth, and development, and helps to prevent infections, as well as asthma, obesity, diabetes, and other chronic illnesses in adulthood. And whereas breastfeeding benefits a mother's postpartum recovery and decreases the risk of ovarian and uterine cancers, diabetes, and heart disease. And whereas breastfeeding is recognized by the Florida Department of Health, Florida Breastfeeding Coalition, Tampa Bay, and Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Force, and major medical organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the National WIC Association, the Office of Women's Health, World Health Organization, among others, as the healthiest method of infant feeding. The Surgeon General's call to action to support breastfeeding highlights that if 90% of U.S. babies were breastfed exclusively for six months, the nation would save an estimated $13 billion per year in healthcare costs. And whereas World Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the first week of August and is a global initiative to raise awareness of the benefits of breastfeeding and its important long-term effects on the growth and development of infants, with the 2023 theme being enabling breastfeeding, making a difference for working parents. And Black Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the last week of August, focusing on the racial disparity in breastfeeding rates and the unique cultural barriers among black women, which is linked to high black infant mortality rates. Black Breastfeeding Week also aims to promote diversity in the lactation field and reduce first-food deserts in black communities. Whereas Florida law permits mothers to breastfeed in any location, public or private, irrespective Parents and children are valued members of the US labor force. Accommodations for breastfeeding at work protected under the law benefit not only women and children. But employers, as there are cost savings in terms of healthcare due to less illness, higher morale, and a stronger sense of loyalty among lactating employees. Whereas Florida Breastfeeding Coalition, Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Forces recognizes that it is vital for families to make informed choices about the health of their infants. And supports increased efforts by hospital staff, providers, employers, and all Floridians to not only encourage, but to provide tangible support for breastfeeding. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of August 2023 as Breastfeeding Support Month in Citrus County, Florida. And encourage all citizens to join in this worthy observance. Executed this 8th day of August 2023.
All right, excellent timing for our time certens. First one, we have a 1:30 presentation from Andy Chan, Business Plan for Wright-Rutter Aviation.
Okay, oh, I see. Okay, yeah, I got it, yep. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name is Andy Chan. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Wright-Rutter Aviation. As you know, we operate the Inverness Airport on behalf of the county. And our goal are, at Wright-Rutter Aviation is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. And so that's on the title side and the ending side because that is our primary mission and focus at Wright-Rutter Aviation. Before you, you can see a slide that shows the airport. We have approximately 350 acres at the Inverness Airport. It's a really prime location as far as airports go for a number of reasons. Florida is the flight training capital of the world, as you may or may not be aware. Inverness is, of course, the geographical center of the state of Florida. So that makes it quite convenient for flight training to access various parts of flight, various airports throughout the state. And we're also in a unique area that statistically is less likely to be hit by hurricanes. And we have an elevation of 65 feet at the Inverness Airport. So we're very resilient from a storm perspective. So a lot of appealing factors to the Inverness Airport, including, of course, many of you, or maybe all of you, were at the groundbreaking ceremony for the business park. Which is a new and exciting chapter at the Inverness Airport. Next picture, of course, you can see the facility that the county built and what is attracted, what attracted Wright-Rutter Aviation to the Inverness Airport. Wonderful 15,000 square foot facility, two fuel tanks, two 12,000 gallon fuel tanks to include Jet A and 100 low-lated. And you can see a picture of some of the aircraft that we own, operate, and maintain. So who is Wright-Rutter Aviation? So we were founded in 2016 by two University of Central Florida graduates, so we are locals. And our mission is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. And you'll see in a little bit how we continue, how we've done that in the past and how we continue to offer things that other flight schools are unable to do. Our big hairy audacious goal is to become one of Citrus County's largest employers. And we're well on our way to that path. Our current agreement, as it's outlined, in front of you, you can see a number of required services that are outlined in our contract. I'll touch on them. We do commercial aircraft refueling, aircraft storage, aircraft apron services, maintenance and repair servicing of aircraft. Management of the airport on behalf of the county, including the fuel farm. We are open to the public for pilots and passengers. We provide emergency services to disabled aircraft. We are a Part 61 and 141 flight school, meaning we are an FAA-approved flight school. And we provide aircraft, I'm sorry, airplane, glider, and helicopter instruction. We are currently working to get our SEVIS visa program in place that was delayed a little bit because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we also interact at the county level with TSA on a regular basis. We provide aircraft rentals and of course have a number of appropriately trained personnel, approximately 25 people on our team. And of course, we have appropriate equipment. We are open seven days a week. So pretty much as you're going through this list, this is the required services that is in our lease with the county. And we, you can see that we check every single box and then more. So the next slide, above and beyond, this discusses all of the things that are not required in our lease that we do above and beyond as what is required. So the first one, we're significantly proud of this one. We're the leader in revolutionary low-cost flight training. Literally, we are the lowest-cost place to earn a pilot certificate in the world. Because of that, we attract hundreds of visitors per year to our facility to learn how to fly. And that's been a huge success. We're also a leader of an electric, in electric aviation. The first person to earn a pilot certificate in an electric airplane in the world did so right at the Inverness Airport at our facility in one of our electric aircraft. We're a leader in aircraft sales. Last year in 2022, we sold more aircraft than any other independent distributor in the world. And that is, that's a task that was very difficult to accomplish, I must say. We started a revolutionary pilot development program with, in conjunction with Mesa Airlines, brought Mesa Airlines to the state of Florida. And there's currently approximately 50 cadets at our facility flying, at this point in time, 10 aircraft, soon to be 17 aircraft in the time-building program. Those cadets are regularly out in the community, you know, spending their dollars and contributing to our tax base. We are, of course, kicked off FAA mechanics program in conjunction with Luther Koochie Technical College. And of course, the county in order to create a pathway for individuals to have a tie into a six-figure job here in the county. And we're big supporters of the community, including the Citrus County Blessings, Boys and Girls Club, and the Boy Scouts of America. One thing we're getting into, and one of the reasons we were really excited about the Inverness Airport is because of the business park. And so we've now accelerated our pathway to aircraft design, development, certification, and production. We're working with several partners on that. But the business park will enable us to expand our location such that we can bring manufacturing to the Inverness Airport. We've successfully recruited emergency service providers, including AirLife, which provides aeromedical services, not only to this county, but the surrounding counties. And they've saved hundreds of lives since we recruited them to the airport. We've also recruited a hurricane response aircraft. Some of you have seen that on the field there. And so again, because of the great location of Inverness, we're able to recruit providers such as that. We recently became a contract maintenance provider for Florida Fish and Wildlife and Florida Highway Patrols, who are regularly servicing and maintaining their aircraft. Brought them to the Inverness Airport. And we're looking to, for them to establish a base in the next couple of years at the Inverness Airport potentially. We are Hertz Rental Car Location, where none of others in the county exist. And we're putting Citrus County on the National Aviation Map. As an example, you can see the cover of Flying Magazine there. Can't see my face quite in that picture, but that's actually me flying that airplane there. We made four magazine covers over the last couple of years, national magazine covers. We also have been assisting in site selection and grant writing services along the way. Quick slide here, next slide, please, is just, you can see that the services that Wright-Rutter Aviation provides to the county and to the tax base goes well above and beyond what is required. And you can see down there, we have some pretty viral YouTube videos. This one discusses how you can earn your pilot certificates in 10 hours or less. Again, a huge success in that low cost. The next couple of slides go over what's called, you know, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity Aviation Economic Impact Study. And you can see, I won't go into the details, but this is the basis of which they form their calculations on the financial impact that the airports have throughout the state. So if you go to the next slide, you can see the 2019 study was conducted with 2017 data. And at that time, this was pre our arrival. We arrived and our lease began in 2018. So before Wright-Rutter came to the Inverness Airport, there were approximately 83 jobs with 3.4 million. And this is not directly at the airport, but it includes the waterfall effect. Again, that's what the previous slide goes over. 4 million in value added and a total of 9.7 million in economic output that the airport provided before our arrival. If you go to the next slide, you can see the 2022 data from the same study, again, provided by the Florida Department of Transportation. And you can see that through the waterfall effect, the airport contributes 543 jobs, 23.6 million in payroll. And economic output of 68.8 million, again, through the waterfall effect. And so the next slide goes over the differences between the 2017 and the 2022 study. Of 460 jobs added in that time and approximately 59.1 million added. One of the big differences is that, of course, we were, you know, attending at Wright-Rutter Aviation and operating the Inverness Airport on the county's behalf. So the next and final slide is just the tail end of it is, again, our motto is to make the dream of flight accessible to all. Now, we wanted to take this opportunity to give you an overview of who we are, what we do at the Inverness Airport. Because we're ready to make another significant investment in the county. As you know, over the last five years, or you may or may not know, there has been a significant need of hangar space at the Inverness Airport. Many, many projects focusing on that. It is difficult to get capital to invest in hangars because once a builder builds a hangar, it becomes county of the property. So traditional mortgages don't apply in this scenario. That being said, Wright-Rutter Aviation is ready to make up to a $5 million investment to build between a 10 and 20,000 square foot facility. Directly to the south of our current existing facility. So we'd like to amend the lease to include that space based on that investment. And for a longer duration of time to allow us to recoup that investment over time. And that's pretty much the presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
No question. I do. You said that you're wanting additional time. How much additional time are you wanting?
So we're requesting a 50-year lease at this point in time to recoup the $5 million investment.
Is that 50 years for the hangar or for the FBO?
So the capital that we have is contingent upon both. So it's, we have gone and got private equity investment. The, so it's tied in together because the ability to operate that building depends on our ability to be an FBO from a commercial perspective. So both essentially would be tied up into one lease. And historically, that's, in the past, our lease has been modified two or three times. And it's always been done at the entire lease level when additional property has been added. So there is this historical precedent to do it in that manner.
Turn your mic on.
You got your part 141?
Yes, we have.
Well, when did that come out?
I believe that occurred in December of last year. It was delayed because of the COVID pandemic when the FAA shut down for about two years.
Looks like you have something on your mind, Commissioner Finnegan.
I do. There's no way I'm gonna vote on a 50-year lease. Frank, we just hired him. He's getting his feet wet. He hasn't had enough time, I think, to fully assess this situation. I appreciate the economic impact that our airport will have and your contribution and maybe what you could do in the future. But I feel like we're, Steve has assembled a team to get us moving forward in the right way, as Commissioner Bayes was saying earlier. For the best economic impact, and I think we need to give him time to assess this situation. So I'd be willing to sign for another year, put your plan on hold, and then the county can vet to see if that's in the best interest of the county. But today, a 50-year lease is not in the best interest of our county.
Commissioner Bayes?
I would agree with Commissioner Finnegan. We have had a lot going on, and as we know, we've hired a consultant to make a review of this airport, tell, both airports actually, to kind of come back and tell us. What we're missing, what our opportunities are, kind of that SWOT analysis. And, you know, we've got a tremendous amount going on out there. We're looking at putting a fire station in, water suppression, three-phase power, finishing out Watson Road. We've just got our appropriations from the state for 9 million. We're putting to work the past 5 million from a couple of years ago. So we've got a lot going on at that airport. And I think, you know, we appreciate everything that you're doing, but I think at this point, I'm ready to make a motion to vote on an extension of a one-year contract with another one-year renewable. To make sure that we can get through the vetting process. Even at, you know, it's just business to me, you know. There's, if you were capitalizing a hangar, which is a metal building, over 50 years. I'm not sure on your depreciation schedule if that would really work. So that's exact, I, yes, I will make a motion that we extend the contract for one year.
Second.
Madam Attorney, my understanding is that we were looking for a consensus today. Can we do a vote on this?
I don't, I don't believe the...
This would come back at the next board meeting. If we can get a consensus, that would help us obviously with the, with the agreement.
I'm just, I'm looking at the recommended action. Presentation provides staff direction. If the consensus is to approve, authorize the chair, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreement between Citrus County. Once the agreement is received, so I think there's sufficient.
Coverage in the agenda?
Information on the agenda that if you wanted to move, it would be to extend the lease and authorize the chairman to sign. The document after it's reviewed by my office.
Okay. Commissioner Kinnard, do you have any, you wanna weigh in?
Well, I certainly would not support the 50-year lease. But I, but I would like to see something a little bit longer than the one-year and one-year renewal. Because quite frankly, everybody's gonna need time still for this to come together. Both Frank and Wright-Rutter to continue with some of their business plan. I would like to see us do maybe three years or somewheres in that neighborhood. To get, give them time to be able to develop. You know, they've done all the things we've asked them to do and more. So before they came out there as the current FBO, that airport was almost irrelevant. Even with a 5,000-foot runway, there was nothing happening there. They have changed that, and I would like to see us give them the confidence. That this board wants to see them continue to grow and build out there. Work together with Frank as our business park plans begin to come together. So I'd like to see a little bit longer contract anyway, but I'm on board. I wouldn't support the 50 years.
If I may clarify, our current contract contemplates a five-year renewal, not a one-year renewal.
Okay. Commissioner Bayes?
Again, I mean, I'm strictly doing business here. It's nothing, but, you know, this was, the information was nice. But what I would really, as business partners, and that's what you're asking us to be, as a business partner, and as a business partner. I would have liked to have seen a business plan, you know, what your five, 10, 15-year goal is. I'd also like to see financials and demonstrate what your strength is and where you're going and where you're gonna take this to. And if we're gonna be business partners, that's, that's the type of information that I think that you would want. From somebody on the other side, if you were asking them to come in. And for that, considering what's in here and the direction that we've taken as far as getting a consultant and telling us what we're doing. With these airports, as far as our opportunities. I feel like right now, we just need to go with the one-year. And it may be totally in your favor. I mean, everything may work out perfect, but I just don't feel comfortable at this point.
Commissioner Kinnard?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna support the one-year renewal. Their current contract. Allows for a five-year renewal based on this board approving it. Then I believe they have, they have lived up to the contract. As I said, they've done everything we've asked them to do and more. I don't see why at this point, we'd pull the rug out from underneath of them. We had a contract with them. That contract said that it, that it contemplated, I guess, a five-year, five-year renewal. I think we give them the five years. If they don't, if they don't live up to our expectations over those five years, then they know that it's coming. But at this point, they've, they've done everything we've asked them to do.
Anything further? I concur with Commissioners Finnegan and Bayes. And that is, I really, I grew up here. I mean, I know Inverness Airport very well from back in the day. And I, you guys are doing a great job. This is not remotely a vote of no confidence. In actual, the flip of that is that we have a whole lot of stuff that's coming down the pike in the next year or two. Because of Frank, because of this economic study we're doing. And I do think that this would end up bringing... And I do think that this would end up bringing this to a head a lot faster versus having it, you know, it's, people were great under deadlines, don't they? So, to have a one-to-two-year deadline is going to be very helpful to try to bring some of these things to fruition and really figure out what we're doing out there versus letting it hang on for five years.
If you're telling us you're taking what we had agreed to in writing is a five-year renewal, and you want to penalize us by taking it down to one year, you're telling us you don't want our business in Citrus County, frankly, and we'll have to take our investment elsewhere. So...
Sorry to hear that.
I just gave in a, a presentation that explains how we went above and beyond where any other operator could have done, and you guys are saying, "I'm gonna penalize you and not live up to the contract that was signed by the Board of County Commissioners", going for a five-year renewal. So, I don't know what more you would have asked from an FBO.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chan. I don't, I really don't see it that way. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I really don't. So...
Commissioner Knard?
I completely agree with them. This is absolutely a vote of no confidence. When we change the contract from five-year to one-year, they've, they've done everything. I don't know, I don't know how you jump in and change, and change the contract at this point. They know the expectations. If they don't live up to the expectations over the next five years, then they know what's coming at the end of that. But they have gone all along this time out there, made our airport relevant, and living up to the expectations and saying, "Okay, we're gonna go and get a five-year lease. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do this." They've done everything. So, there, I, I am not gonna support this, and I think it's, I think it's terrible that we're, that we're doing this to them. So...
Well, since there is a vote on the floor, I'm gonna have to open it to the public, and then I'll bring it back for a final round of board discussion. Is everybody all right with that? Would anybody like to address the board?
Yes, Josh, we're the President and CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. I've been involved in this project for over 20 years. I voted to buy the Inverness Industrial Park, and it sat, and it sat, and it sat. Two of y'all were not on the board during the years that we all collectively went out and got the money for this project. Because we have this young, dynamic operator, that did bring attention to us. I don't think we would be where we would be without the attention that they brought in Tallahassee nationally to this little airport. Now, if there's some things behind the scenes that I'm not seeing as far as what y'all wanna see, I think it would be better to give them a 90 days or 60 days than five years because that's not gonna attract the kind of investment that they're bringing to the table. Five years doesn't do it. One year doesn't do it. So, why, why don't we try to come together? There's some underlying thing here that Frank's gonna do this, Frank's gonna do that. Well, Frank probably knows now what their plan is, and why can't everybody come together? Then we'll have a rational discussion about this. But there were dust wheels rolling through that airport when these people took it over. There was nothing going on there, no return on investment. They fought through an administration that had disdain for that airport. I know that personally. They, they did not spend the grant money that was available. They did not keep up their end of the bargain. They didn't fix a door. They didn't put in the parking lot. They didn't do a lot of things because they didn't believe that the airport was an economic driver. Now that y'all see it as an opportunity and your number-one priority, you think something bigger and better's gonna happen, and it may very well. But I'm loyal to the people that bring me to the dance, and I can assure you, I was on the front lines, as was the rest of my team that's in the audience, bringing that money here. And Andy and Siobhan were 80% of the reason why the state put their treasure behind this airport. So, let's be careful what message you're sending to Tallahassee and the public. Either give them some time to work it out and negotiate, and then they could, you can all walk away. That's his business. But it would be a real problem for the county. I'm a little bit perturbed, and I'm sure y'all can see it. But to say, "I'm gonna give you one year," is ridiculous. Give them 90 days to give you what you want, working with Frank, and then give them enough time to amortize their improvements or part company. One year, even five years, is gonna do it. But if there is a vote today, I hope it's either to continue this or for the five years. But really, what they need is enough time to amortize their improvements. I'm sure if they have an investor, they're looking for something, just like any of y'all would in your business. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs citizen. I've been coming here for a lot of years. The airport has gotten put back and back and back. All right. Five years is not a long contract when you consider how slow things move. The Citrus Springs Civic Association, we rented the building out at the community center in Citrus Springs. Our contract was for a three-year renewal. After the first year, we were given three years, each year with an increase. Because once you get into it and you get set, you've now got all the expenses that you've put into it, addresses, phone numbers, paperwork, okay? That doesn't take one day or one year. To give them the five-year that was in the backup material is only fair to them. It's not gonna take 30, 60, or 90 days. It's gonna take time to get with Frank and get things going. Since 2006, when I started coming to these meetings, we're still in the talking stage. We finally got some money. We finally got some ground broken. How many years later? 17 years. You're talking about this person that actually is working at the airport, making money, bringing things to the county, paying taxes, paying taxes to the county, helping us provide services for our people. We need to at least honor what we had said, and I agree with Commissioner Knard. The five-year is not an outrageous amount. Let them do and work with Frank and have the time to do it so that no mistakes are made and that it is done properly and in order. I'd like to see them bring in helicopter repair. Because who has helicopters? The sheriff, mosquito control, and EMS. We send our helicopters way over across wherever to get them fixed every so many hours of use. Why not have him work on some plans with Frank and possibly bring helicopter repair and service here as part of our airport? There are lots of things that they need to talk about and develop. One year is not gonna do it. 30, 60 days is not gonna do it. They may come up with a plan, but it's not gonna get initiated or tried. They need the time to try. It takes time to get things working. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Would anybody else like to speak from the public? Seeing none, I'll close open to the public. Any further discussion? Commissioner Bayes?
Mr. Howard or Frank, would either one of you like to address the issue of what was discussed about the, the 50-year lease and maybe what documentation was requested or asked for or, I mean, can you kind of give us an idea of why this is being brought to us with a 50-year lease?
Yeah, I don't, other than, I mean, we had, we had one, Frank, I think has had some discussions. I was at a meeting with Mr. Chan, and it was related to the relationship of building this hangar. I mean, the, the amount of money that would be involved with that. He did provide a document recently. I think he's gonna give that to you with a third party that's come forward, I think. But that's what the driver is. I think I've not got anything ever in writing. This was all verbal. That's why I wanted to make sure he actually gave that to you today and explained what he was looking for in the terms, because to date, we have not received anything in writing formally from him.
And, and what, as far as a lease, I, I know that there's been some brief conversation that I think Frank has indicated that the lease is not as strong of a lease as what other airports around us have and that, you know, we felt like we just don't have the expertise in that and that we may need to look for some stronger language on a lease.
And I think that third party that's looking, that will create this business plan is gonna look at all those subjects. If, can Frank come forward? Frank should be here in the audience. But that's my understanding. They'll look at all those things. Obviously, there's, sometimes you're comparing apples to bananas with these airports because they're all a little different, and what we offer here is a little different than Brooksville and other places like that. And I know Frank's tried to do it, a deep dive the best he can, but we, we're confident this study, I think, is gonna, you know, put us in the right, right direction.
And that is correct. So, the external study, the consultant will look at the terms of the leases on both FBOs, so Crystal River and Inverness. So, that is important, but I would, and, you know, I spoke, I think mostly with the chairman, who's not here today during the briefing, but I'll say a couple of things since I'm up here. I had advised to keep any kind of ground lease related to a hangar away from this lease for the FBO because I think those are two completely different animals. The FBO is a lease, is a project that, again, there's commitment, there's been a history of the FBO doing what we've asked them to do. So, I caution to keep those separate. They sort of came out together, and the boards had to consider them both. I think that hangar lease is a distraction from the actual agreement, which is to provide services in FBO. Now, I'm gonna put on my business recruitment and expansion hat. Andy's business is an existing business, and I will work for existing businesses before I will go out and run around and try and land the new shiny business that comes to Citrus County with no skin in the game. These folks have skin in the game. They've provided. I feel like, again, it's not my place to make the decision, but I'm gonna advocate for them because businesses need certainty. None of us would like uncertainty about our future. They've invested in, in the community. They're doing what we asked them to do. So, I would caution against any kind of interruption like that. Now, we can look at the terms of the lease based on what the consultant comes back with. We should have that information by early next year, and there are opportunities to negotiate on areas where, let's, we actually don't know what the county's doing right now. We may be giving away the store at both of these FBOs, but it may be that actually, we're giving them a pretty bad deal, and they're not as competitive with other FBOs, like the ones in Hernando County or Marion County. So, I would say caution, provide certainty to this business that has invested. Let's look at the data that comes back from that consultancy, and then we'll have a better idea of negotiating. It doesn't mean we can't negotiate for better terms. It's just gonna be a more informed negotiation, is my opinion.
Commissioner Bayes?
So, do you have a recommendation for us today, then?
I would approve the lease on the five-year terms because I believe that that gives this business certainty. That's, that is what is on the table right now. I'm not aware of any complaints where the FBO has not provided outstanding services to our aviation community. Nobody from the aviation board has raised any concerns. So, I think we're looking at a clean slate and a business that is invested in our community. Again, let's look at those terms. When the lease is under scrutiny by an outside consultant, a totally objective party, then we've got some terms. So, that when either one of the FBOs comes to us and says, "Hey, we'd really like this deal," we can say, "Okay, but we're giving it away here, so we need to tighten up on this. You know, we're gonna cut your margin a little on that, but maybe we can work with you on this one." I think that's the way to approach this.
So, are you suggesting that five-year lease that we can renew, we negotiate in 12 months based on this information, or is just a five-year lease?
Well, I think the terms of the lease can be amended at any time. If we find, let's say they say, "We want this kind of deal so we can get a new fuel complex," right? So, we can say, "Okay, we'll come to the table with that, but you're gonna have to give us this concession on the lease where we've identified from a consultant that we're giving you too good of a deal here." That, that's just normal business, I'd say. Again, when you're in a contract, right, both parties can negotiate. So, I don't feel like it's, "Okay, this is done, and then five years, we have no negotiation." So, I'm pretty certain that in that scrutiny of the leases and the agreement and the way the airports are run, there're gonna be lots of things that we can get better. And I think that's part of the negotiating with these, with these FBOs, and, and I would lump both of those in there.
Frank, you just got the side eye from the attorney.
Okay, let's clarify. Again, you know, when folks want things, I mean, most contracts, leases can be negotiated. Yeah, things are moving target. I mean, case in point, Mr. Chan's insurance went up significantly, right? What's the first thing he did? Came to us and said, "Hey, how can we work on this lease to make it work for both parties?" So, I mean, again, that's sort of how it works because there's always these outside factors that come. That's an area where you say, "Okay, that's a external cost to do in business, but is there a way we can split that with you, keep your business growing, providing services, continuity?" So, I think there are opportunities to negotiate, even if we do this five-year renewal.
Well, I would amend my motion, then, to a five-year with amendable terms on a 12-month rolling basis.
Madam Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that before we go any further?
I, I agree with Frank that parties can always have discussions. But in the end, if discussions don't come to a meeting of the minds, then the, the black and white words on a paper prevail. So, you can say, "I, I don't know how to enforce what you just said, Commissioner. I, I don't know how to enforce a five-year..."
So, you can't, you can't do a five-year lease and then you can amend it on one-year terms that are agreeable to both parties? So, if this, if this consultant comes back and says, "We're getting the raw end," or "they're getting the raw end," that we can't renegotiate that at, on that 12 months?
I don't know what incentive the person who's on the better end is going to have to change the terms just to suit the person who's on the worse end. I, I can't promise you that the parties can come to a meeting of the minds a year down the road.
And I agree with that. I mean, ultimately, it's consensual. The lease is gonna be the lease, and I agree 100%, but if both parties can come to the table, but otherwise, we're gonna be stuck with this five-year lease, 100%.
If, if I'm on the winning end and I'm, 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 I have no incentive to, to negotiate.
The, the incentive, and I'll address that first. The incentive for the person who's on the winning end is when that person wants something outside of the contract. If it's us and we want something additional from them, then we've gotta be willing to give up something as well. Or if they come to us and say, you know, "We'd really, at least went through the aviation authority for their input on it." And I said, "I don't know if it did or not." I found out that it did not. And he said, "You need to make sure in the future..." He came here to oppose it. He had told me that he was going to oppose that, surprisingly, because it was a bad deal for Wright Rutter.
I believe I know who you're talking about.
He said, he said, "The deal that they just signed with you, there is no way they can financially make it." He said, "You guys need to revisit that. You need to bring forward the, the cool Jerry, or Gary Cool formula." He said, "That is a much more fair formula, and give your FBO a fighting chance to make it out there. You just had one that bombed out there. Give them a chance." I talked to Randy privately about it. He came back later and said, "There's no support on the board to revisit it. We've got, the county's got a very good deal here. We're well-protected. If they go under, it's because of their own mismanagement." Here we are today. They have not gone under. They've, they've not only survived, but they've thrived out there. I mean, I just, already, I hate already that they have doubt in their mind about our support for what they've done. In the face of somebody who knows the industry very well, they survived, and they're, and they're, they're growing out there. I, I would love to see this board give them our unconditional support, support their five-year lease, help, help them to continue to grow. It doesn't mean we give away the farm, but I don't believe we have given away the farm. The individual I spoke with whenever this was that we first approved it, he didn't think we were giving away the farm. He thought we're, we were killing the, killing the golden goose that, that could be out there. So, that's my, that's my position on it. I hope, I hope that we rethink this a little bit. I'm thankful you've amended your motion. My, my voice would be to, my support would be, support the five-year renewal, wish them the best, and let's keep moving forward with the consultant and them working together with Frank.
Chair?
Yes. I know, we gotta go back to the motion. Do you still wish to, given now that you've heard all of this, do you still wish to amend the motion? Because if you do, she needs to amend her second.
Yes, but, but is there anything else from the administrator or, or... Yes, but, but is there anything else from the administrator or, or Frank as economic development that you would like to, you know, have out of this before we would amend the motion?
So you're not amending it yet. We're still discussing possibly amending it. I think that's the answer.
My, my only comments would be any of these things that even come out of the study, you're going to take time. So anything that comes out of there, we're going to take this to the board, and the pace of this county has not been the fastest. So there, time's on our side, but we need more time. So I'm actually, the same thing with Frank. I think we need more time with that, with them as well. So I'm open to that as well, what Frank had said. But I think we're going to need more time coming out of that study to get the consensus of the board moving forward with what this looks like. We do need more time to be able to accomplish that.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, that was our whole point in the beginning of the one-year was, just like Frank said, it's going to be into next year before we get our study done. So even for Wright-rudder, we were wanting to move ahead, doing things the right way. Did not want to say this publicly, but everyone's saying, you know, and I'm sure with, with flight, maybe it's been a fantastic job. But when Commissioner Bays and I were first elected, I mean, not too long after, we were hammered with a big issue out at the airport that was dangerous and potentially litigious that, that we all had to handle. So that was a grave concern of me just walking in and being new. So now that we have professionals on board, we have Frank looking at the economic development, and then we have the consultant coming in for this. That was my whole point about the one-year, and that's why I was sticking to it because now we have a year. If they're a good partner, we're going to have a consultant looking at all those things and saying, this is what's going to be the best way to keep them, and this is what's best for our community moving forward. So I don't, I don't regret seconding your motion at all.
I'm going to go back to Frank. Frank, as the economic development, you've stood there and put your hat on and said that you will advocate for the people that are here.
Yes, as an existing business, businesses want certainty wherever they can find that. And if that means the lease under their feet, that is an example of certainty. I think what the problem is here is this lease ends in like the end of the month, right?
Correct.
So we are at the last possible minute to have this discussion and debate. So unfortunately, we're dealing with a lease template that is what it is. We're dealing with a timeline that is coming up rapidly. So I don't even know how, and this is where Denise will have to answer that, but I don't know that there's a lot of time to throw different terms in this thing before we have a vacant FBO. So again, not the greatest position to be in, but I think the best option is probably to renew the existing lease that's on the table, give the company certainty. The last thing we want is an interruption of services at, you know, take off the business retention and expansion hat where I advocate for the business. The last thing we want as a community is to have a disruption of services at Inverness Airport, to renegotiate another lease with somebody else. Let's say, you know, these folks don't get the lease. Now we've got an interruption of services. We lose momentum. How long is that going to take before we get another agreement on the table? Still, the study's going to be going. We're not going to be having terms available from that consultant to create a new lease template if we have a business interruption. So that's would be my caution.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
You said that we're at the end of the lease. It was my understanding that Mr. Chan wouldn't sign the five-year agreement. So why are we at the bitter end? I don't like having a proverbial gun to my head to make a decision because it was push, push, push. So was that on the county, or was that on the FBO?
Yeah, I don't know. I just know that the lease is up, I believe, at the end of this month. So.
And it is. It has been sent. It was sent a few weeks back.
I, I stand by my opinion. I want shorter, in order to get this study done. And one, and I'm going to say it again, this is not to create an air of, not of uncertainty nor of not having faith in Wright-rudder. I do. We just need to get through this economic study, which is coming out in January. And then we can actually look at all of our lease terms, do everything else, and make sure that we have a, a win-win situation for both county and the FBO. That would still be my opinion, but I'm one of four. Anybody like to, Mr. Canard?
Well, we're an hour and 17 minutes into this meeting, and already we have created concern with at least two individuals in doing business in this county. Uncertainty is what keeps people away. There are a lot of other counties that, that have certainty, that have stability, and this is, this is a bad precedent. I hope that it doesn't go down this road.
Well, I, I will say this. I, I take objection to what you said. I don't think this creates uncertainty with doing business with our county. I think it sounds, sends a loud and clear message that, yes, we are open for business, but we're going to be picky and we are going to get the right kind of business here. So that, that's how I perceive it, perceive it. I don't think it's a, that we're there, we're not here for business. It's just we're going to do good business. And I think far too long this county has taken a sidestep in what we've accepted to be good business. I am going to amend my motion. I'm going to amend it for a two-year lease. I think that gives us time to get this, this study underway. It is, is by no means a vote of non-confidence, but I think we have got to do the right course of business here and take some action that sets a precedent for going forward in the right manner.
I'll amend my second.
Since it's amended, I need to open it to the public again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Frank.
Josh Wood, President, CEO of the Citrus County Chamber. I agree with Commissioner Card. I think y'all are making a mistake. I think the optics are awful on this, just absolutely awful. It's not being backed-